I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please.
I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam clerk, would you please call the roll? Thank you.
Alderman Mathie.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Lumway.
Here.
Alderman Burgess.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Hallman.
Here.
Alderman Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and start out with recognitions and proclamations. And we have one community planning month, and that's October 2018. Ah, Katie, come forward. I didn't... Declaring 2018, October 2018, Community Planning Month. Whereas, change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. Whereas, community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for people's work and lives. And whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas, the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas, the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas, the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions, sound planning and plan implementation, to make the quality of our settlement and environment. And whereas, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the planning commissions and other city planners who have contributed their time, expertise, and to the improvement of the city of Bloomington. And whereas, we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community planners, the city of Bloomington, and extend our heartfelt thanks for their continued commitment to public service by these great professionals. I, Terry Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, now hereby proclaim October 2018 to be Community Planning Month, and congratulations, and thank you for all you do, Katie. Katie, did you have anything to add to that? Katie, did you want to speak?
No.
Oh, okay. That's pretty clear. Next one, with special pride, although I had nothing to do with it, is Illinois Wesleyan Day. And I know we have several people here. I know we've got the President, we've got the First Lady, and we've got Carl, because Carl's everywhere. And if you'd come forward, please, yeah. And Carl, come on. Gee, man. Carl's not my boss. Okay. This is a proclamation, Illinois Wesleyan Day, October 1st, 2018.
I do. No.
That is kind of what you think as they're coming up there. You think I do, yeah. Gosh, you're still taller. You're too tall. Okay. Whereas, Illinois Wesleyan University was founded in 1850 as a private four-year university and is now an independent residential liberal arts university with approximately 1,900 students. And whereas, IW is ranked as one of the best values in the nation by Kiplinger and offers over 80 majors, minors, and programs in the liberal arts and business, the fine arts, nursing, and eight pre-professional programs, while maintaining a low 11 to 1 student faculty ratio with an average class size of around 17. And whereas, Illinois Wesleyan University also offers several athletic opportunities for athletes participating in the NCAA's Division III tier and is now a member of the College Conference of Illinois and Wisconsin, a conference with 22 varsity teams, 11 men and 11 women. And whereas, several famous alumni have attended Illinois Wesleyan University from the world of television, film, politics, sports, and stage. Now therefore, I, Terry Renner, Mayor of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim the first day of October to be Illinois Wesleyan University Day in the city of Bloomington in coordination with the centennial homecoming of the university, and hope the citizens of the city will recognize the importance and the impact that the university has had on our community. And witness thereof, I sign this on this date. Thank you very much, and congratulations. Thank you for all you do.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Congratulations. I do as well. Thank you. Did you want to say a few words?
Unaccustomed, though I am, to public speaking. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the members of the City Council for this honor. I think it's important that we highlight how closely we're tied to this town, where we're a part of it. Also, thank you for what I understand to be green streetlights during homecoming.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Fire Prevention Week. And we've got the troops up here to accept all of this. Great. And our distinguished chief, good to see you. Thank you. Proclamation, Fire Prevention Week, October 7th through 13th. Proclamation, Fire Prevention Week, October 7th through 13th, 2018. Whereas, the city of Bloomington is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Bloomington; and whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the location where people are at greatest risk from fire; and whereas, home fires killed 2,735 people in the United States in 2016, according to the National Fire Prevention Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 352,000 home fires; and whereas, the majority of fire deaths, four out of five occur at home each year; and whereas, the fire death rate per thousand home fires reported to the U.S. Fire Department was 10% higher in 2016 than in 1980; and whereas, Bloomington residents should identify places in their home where fires can start and eliminate those hazards; and whereas, working smoke alarms can cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half; and whereas, Bloomington residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room outside each separate sleeping area and on every level of the home; and whereas, Bloomington residents should listen for the sound of the smoke alarms when it sounds, respond by going outside immediately to the designated meeting place; and whereas, Bloomington residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire; and whereas, Bloomington's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through fire prevention and protection education; and whereas, Bloomington residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes; and whereas, the 2018 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Look, Listen, Learn, Be Aware: Fire Can Happen Everywhere," that rhymes, effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our fire, or, excuse me, our safety from fire. Therefore, I, Terry Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim October 7th through the 13th, 2018, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, and I urge the people of Bloomington to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond to smoke alarm sounds by existing buildings, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of our city's fire department. Thank you so much, and thank you, Chief. Thank you all for your work.
I just wanted to make an announcement that the Saturday of Fire Prevention Week, October 13th, at 11 o'clock, we're going to have a ceremony dedicating a fire service memorial at Miller Park, and we have put invites in your mail slots as well, so hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Last but not least, we have recognition of the Parks and Recreation Cultural Arts Department and its 50th anniversary. That's right. Some of us are more than golden. Thank you all very much. Recognition, Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department's 50th anniversary. Whereas, Bloomington's Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Department was founded in 1968; whereas, for 50 years, the Parks and Recreation Cultural Department has vitally been important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our community and ensuring the health of all residents, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community and region; and whereas, the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department has been providing public programs that build healthy, active communities, that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and improve the mental and emotional health of all residents; and whereas, the Parks and Recreation Cultural Program enhances the community's economic prosperity, their increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of business, and crime reductions; and whereas, Bloomington, Illinois recognizes and embraces the benefits from Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts resources and celebrates 50 years of contributing these benefits to our community. Therefore, I, Terry Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, do hereby recognize and celebrate the 50th anniversary of the city's Parks and Recreation and Cultural Arts Department, and invite the community to celebrate the 50th celebration in Miller Park on Saturday, September 29th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. Thank you so much. Next, we move to public comment, and we have three, and this is where citizens have the right to speak to us about any subject, up to three minutes, and we have, well, the three may as well be ready, is Michelle Rothwell, and then Scott Steinling, and Glenn Ludwig. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Come on up, and you don't need to sign in, because I've got you over here.
Okay. Hi, I'm Michelle Rothwell. I'm here because my son works for the Pepsi Ice Center, and he parks in the parking ramp. He's worked there five years. He's going to college. He drives Zamboni. It's been a great job. He uses our car to get to and from work. A couple of months ago, he received a ticket for parking in the Pepsi Ice Center parking lot. He appealed the ticket. What happens is if you park there for more than four hours, you get a ticket. They have two parking passes for the entire staff over there, and those are used by the managers. My son has worked there five years. He's considered a seasonal employee, so he hasn't gotten a raise, which is fine. It's a great job to earn some cash while he goes to college. But the, and he also can't park in there more than once a day. So if he leaves and works, let's say, three hours, and then he covers the shift of one of his coworkers, he can get a ticket. So he received another ticket about, oh, I would say, two weeks ago, because he parked there longer than four hours. I believe his shift was six hours. He has been, there was an occasion about a year or a year and a half ago where he was heading out of the building and he heard gunshots. So he called the police. He was interviewed by the police. My concern is, they've told him, they've told my husband, that we can buy a parking pass for him at $50 a month. He makes less than $10 an hour. His paychecks are probably anywhere from $100 to $200 a week. That covers his spending money. We make him pay for his books and his incidentals, gas, that kind of thing. And my other concern is if he has to move his car after four hours, and he works a lot of times until midnight, because he drives Zamboni, and ice time is precious, and people skate till very late, it's not safe for him to move his car at that time of night, and then have to move it someplace and walk back, maybe a few blocks. So, in the appeals, we've appealed the tickets, the two different tickets twice, and we were denied, and we were told that this is our next step. So what I'm asking is that you consider giving additional parking passes to the employees, or that you change the rules so that it doesn't affect, and he's not the only employee that this has happened to. I know somebody has, another parent has emailed, too. And there are kids anywhere from 16 to my son's 22 who work there. There are females, males, and so we've been asking them to walk their car late at night. I just think it's kind of an unsafe situation. So, thank you.
Thank you. And again, just our normal protocol is not to respond, but, you know, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Scott Steinling, and then Glenn Ludwig.
Scott Steinling, Ward 5. I guess it is interesting to me that some, there are people on the council that have been there way too long. There needs to be term limits. And, you know, I really don't understand where people can go there and stay forever. And I think we know who I'm referring to. There are some people that, I agree that the council members should be elected by ward. I've always felt, and still do, that they should be elected by ward, but at large. That way, if just the alderman for a ward is making decisions, can pack that ward, fine. But they're making decisions that can pack the whole Aussie city. And you have, a lot of times, and you have no say, you know, other than just shut your mouth. And I don't agree with it. I don't agree with you, Mr. Mayor, because you took a leave of absence, but you still continued your professor duties at Wesleyan, so it must not have been too much. Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to Glenn Ludwig.
Well, thank you for this opportunity to speak before the elected business leaders of the city of Bloomington. My intent tonight includes providing each of you a depiction to provide motivation to the council to place a real high priority on what I view as a really important current opportunity. The visual reminder I'm providing each of you is a gift bag. They're around in front of you. Don't try going over and reaching down. You might fall in. But there is a gift bag, including a highly transparent mason jar labeled "Grossinger Arena: Stop the Red Ink." That's why I've got red on tonight. Are you going for this, too, or is this for the firemen? I don't know. I might recruit you for my issue. So that's what I'm here for. I intend that jar of material to be a prioritization place maker. So you'll think about, hey, we've got to work on this. You'll discover in the jar some red candy, some real hot red candy. And that's based on the arena a little bit, and I'll explain that. The report you got last week indicated that the arena continues to lose a lot of money. I expect, when you get the capital expenses and so forth folded in with that, we're going to be up to $750,000, is my hopeful guess that I'm high, for the current year. You know, who knows what the cumulative lifetime negative financial impact has been for the arena. I'm concerned about it. Let's assume for a second that that red candy inventory represents city dollars, and let's assume for a moment that it represents $750,000 that's in those bags. That would make each piece of candy worth $4,000 bucks. Now, that is what I would call a really high sweet indulgence, just like the Grossinger. I suggest that you keep that jar around to remind you before you come to meetings in the future. So I've got to wrap up here quickly. Lastly, the bag contains a single sheet list of 11 questions, which I respectively provide to you for you to consider. I think they're highly relevant, and I think if you consider those carefully, that you can get a long ways towards finding a solution for the Grossinger. I've given you the questions. Myself and the citizens are waiting for your answers and your action. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to move right along to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the council would like to have pulled from the consent agenda for separate consideration or separate vote? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Hallman. Is there a second? Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Any further discussion? Okay. Okay, sorry about that. There we go. Motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And we move right along to item 8A, and that's consideration of an ordinance amending the city code administrative adjudication. And I believe Angela Finest Jimenez, who is right here, is going to present, or Steve, are you starting, or?
No, I was just going to turn it over to her as well.
Okay. Excuse me. Thank you.
Good evening, council. This amendment, the ordinance that we're asking you to amend, adds minimum fines. So we've had administrative court since, like, April 2015, and we've seen some property owners will go in in abate right before our hearing. And they do that because they don't have to pay the fine. What we've done in the past year, we've added court costs, $110, $100 for court, and $10 for the attorneys, because that's within your ordinance right now. However, we still have individuals that procrastinate with their abatement, and they play the system. So I think what would happen, be best for the city of Bloomington, is that if they do not abate by the time the department forwards the case over to legal prior to that first court date, that will assess the court cost of $110, as well as a minimum fine per code violation. So if they have seven violations, that'd be $50, depending on the type of violation, but $50 per each of those counts. And then the other thing that we also are memorializing is the chronic nuisance properties. Under prosecutorial discretion, if I've had a case that has had other violations within 12 calendar months, example, rubbish, I will not dismiss the case until that property has been in complete abatement for one year. So this ordinance will memorialize that timeframe. They come see me at one month, two months, three months, six months, and a year. And so that's what I'm asking within this ordinance to change, because I think that will help the inspectors enforce the codes that they see that are constantly in violation. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions? Alderwoman Schmidt?
I'm delighted to see this. Thank you for your work on it. The $110, is that 100%? Does that cover 100% of the cost?
I believe with the amount of cases, it will cover a large percentage of the hearing officer and our fees. I can't say 100%, but it will help.
And I had a question about, so it says, when a property owner gets a second property code violation within a 12-month period, that individual becomes a chronic offender. And I guess I'm wondering whether 12 months is too long of a period of time, but I'm not following how often this happens, and...
So it's actually the chronic property. So for example, if, let's take Fronton Grove. For example, Fronton Grove has been in AC Court for rubbish. They've been in AC Court for housing violations for that particular property. So that particular property would be deemed a chronic property that would have to be in compliance, and then each time I afforded a new violation, they would have higher fines, and they'd have a faster court date. But 12 months, I think that's what I've had in comparable municipalities. I haven't gone for a shorter timeframe, and that's not saying we don't have to do that. We can decrease the time from 12 to six months. I just think sometimes these violations take a while to abate. So...
I guess I'm thinking about the landlord who has a violation and ignores it after one month, and then ignores it after two months. Are we giving him 10 more months?
No. So what happens if they're in noncompliance from code enforcement, it's forwarded to me. If they are in noncompliance by the hearing date, we will take a judgment. We have to wait for 35 days after that judgment, and we're enforcing it in circuit court for an LM. And then it's a contempt matter. For example, I'll be back tomorrow for some contempt proceedings on a particular property owner.
Alderman Black?
Jamie was first.
Oh. Thank you. Could you, just for, I was trying to see it in here, could you just go over what the difference between a code violation and a behavioral violation are, because I didn't see it defined?
So a behavioral violation are my OV tickets that the police officers issue, or, for example, Lake Patrol. Typically, those are for the police that's disorderly, some of the homeless situations downtown, cannabis, I see a lot of cannabis, under 10 grams, paraphernalia. The Lake Patrol would be no swimming in the lake situations such as that. And those are prosecuted over in the Osborne, where there's not really a way for them to abate it besides the monetary or the public service.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then my understanding is somebody gets a notice that they've got a violation, then do they get a second notice, and then they end up in the administrative court after that, or, because is it multiple notices, then they're in administrative court, so they've had multiple opportunities to fix something first?
Before it's forwarded to me, it's really within the discretion of the code enforcement department how many notices they give an individual owner. However, when it comes to me, once they issue a summons, they have 16 days before the summons will be issued before they can actually come to court.
Okay.
But a chronic property owner, once they've had that one particular property in court, if they have another violation, they'll just automatically be referred to AC Court.
Okay.
Okay. Last question is, so we have some properties in various places around town where things are not getting fixed? Is there any sort of a provision at all where if somebody still hasn't fixed an issue six months in or whatever, the amount of the fines goes up? Or is it just they continue to stay to the same fine the entire time?
If I've taken a judgment, then there's just the interest that I'd be enforcing the monetary judgment and the abatement and the interest over in Circuit Court. If I have not taken a judgment...
So it's not an additional fine, like, for every month that you haven't fixed something? It's...
Some offenses are per day, depending on the type of violation. So hopefully, if they have not been in abatement for six months and I've had an AC Court, I'm not waiting to take a judgment for six months.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Alderman Black?
Thank you. Thank you for putting this together. At the risk of paraphrasing Thanos, this type of ordinance brings a smile to my face. We've been talking about this for forever, and getting aggressive is... I mean, I wish it were more aggressive than this, but this is the recommendation from staff, and so I'm supportive. I guess I'd like to mark on the calendar maybe a year from now or nine months from now to circle back to see how this is doing. If it's truly capturing some of these costs and seeing that abatement go down, some sort of measurement that we can see how this ordinance is performing, and then make the appropriate adjustments from there.
Yep.
Okay. Any other... Oh, excuse me. Alderwoman Bray and Mila Wambway?
Thank you. Thanks for your work on this. So just a quick question in regards to the effective date and kind of how the effective date comes together with our process here in the city. So Section Five says that the ordinance takes effect 10 days after approval and publication. So if we vote yes tonight, and then we... So maybe walk us through a little bit if you know the timeframe that, let's say, a property owner currently may be negatively affected by this. What kind of notice will they have and time to act and remedy things before this becomes effective as to them?
Well, if it was voted on and approved tonight, then we'd have to wait the mandatory 10 days, and then it would be published within the local newspaper. And then it would state the effective date within that publication of when this ordinance comes into play. Now, some of this is already memorialized. Really, I already do the three months, the six months, and the year. So this is just putting it into writing. And I already charged the $110 court cost, because I have the authority to do so with other ordinances, and it's within my prosecutorial discretion. The only thing that's really changing is that minimum fine of automatically assessing that minimum fine for the property owner.
Thank you.
Alderman Wambway?
Okay. Thank you. I wanted to kind of reiterate what I heard Scott and Karen say about the cost and trying to recoup the cost as much as possible. I mean, I do understand that, you know, and I yield to staff's wisdom, you know, when they're trying to put something together. But at the same time, I have concern for, you know, in terms of fairness, for those people who do a good job with their properties. And then on the other end, you have people who do, who don't. And yet, you know, the rest of us have to bear the cost of their lack of concern for their property. So I hope that, yes, within a year or so, we can kind of revisit that and see, you know, if, you know, what we're imposing now is really capturing all of our costs. So the other thing that I wanted to say is, and this may not be for you, I think it might be for community development. I've had a couple of properties in my ward where folks didn't always do what they were supposed to do in terms of community... I know Bob and I kind of worked together on some of those. And I do feel that sometimes for those property owners, there is somewhat of a disconnect with, you know, their impact on the neighborhood. But also, you know, what that impact is on, you know, property taxes, property values, but also the, you know, the services that we might be able to afford or not because the property is really not up to par. Does that make sense? Do you understand what I'm trying to say? So I think it's kind of a... I hope... And I don't know if you have a sort of an educational piece. And let me talk in terms of examples. So I do know of a group of folks who live together. I think they're... I don't know if they're renters or not, but they're not doing a very good job, you know, with their property. And it took the neighbors, you know, talking to me and saying, look, this is not okay. You know, we're taking care of our property, but these folks are not, you know, and community development has to go back there time and time again. But I don't think those individuals necessarily understand that if their property is not kept up to par, the other properties in the areas are going to be depressed in terms of their values. So I hope we can do some sort of education for those individuals, you know, because they just kind of go about their business and do whatever they want to do and don't pay attention to those kinds of things.
I didn't sense a question, but Mr. Mart, did you want to clarify anything?
He referenced community development. So a lot of these things, you know, we have a minimum code standard, and there's also a community standard and neighborhood standard. So I think this education piece of making sure that those property owners that might be in the neighborhood that aren't maintaining that, the standard of the neighborhood, I think that's something we need to look into. And, you know, you should all understand that we, you know, we're complaint-driven. And so when we get that complaint, we automatically will send out, do the inspection, send out that notice, and that timing on the notice is based on the violation that's occurred. So we're working through that violation notice. And then tall grass and weeds, as an example, would be something that if they had a multiple violation in a, within that same timeframe or year, we would be actively moving that forward to administrative hearing.
Alderman Black?
Thank you. And thank you for that. I don't think you meant it this way, and I'm just going to clarify that when we say standards of the neighborhood, that we're going to be enforcing the code evenly across the community. You know, I'd hate to see some areas get more attention than others, and especially in our historic core. Those folks have the right to have a very high level of living in their neighborhood.
Okay. Anything else? Okay? Is there a motion on this item?
Make a motion that we approve this item as presented to us.
And a second by Alderman Black. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll just go ahead and vote. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And we go on to item B. That's consideration of an ordinance approving an economic incentive agreement to support the retention and expansion of commercial packaging in the city of Bloomington as requested by the community development department. And we're going to go ahead and start with a present... I'll turn it over to Mr. Rasmussen and for whatever remarks he might have, and then Mr. Mart.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. And I just did want to make a note that this was a change to the regular agenda, that we had had it on the consent agenda, and then there was an amendment that went out to change this to a regular agenda, item eight B, for those people who didn't see it on the regular agenda. And having said that, then I will turn it over to Bob Mart to walk through this process with us.
Mr. Mart? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'd like to provide an overview of the municipal incentive request from commercial packaging. Commercial packaging started business here in Bloomington in 1983, and they have been growing and expanding in McLean County for over 35 years now. The company distributes bags that are used in multiple industries, and they have a wide product line under that component. The company currently employs approximately 40 people within McLean County. Tonight, representatives of commercial packaging are here. The vice president of operations and the chief financial officer are in the back row. The subject property located at 2047 Ireland Grove Road is approximately 150,000 square feet of a building originally constructed in 1960 for Modine Manufacturing Company. Modine closed in 1984. The property was acquired by Wildwood Industries in 1985, and Wildwood went bankrupt in about 2009. Commercial packaging purchased the property in the summer of 2017. Currently, there are two businesses on the site. The building's currently undergoing renovation. A portion that's used for warehousing is in operation right now, and they're continuing to do renovations for the office area that serves as their headquarters. In addition, the plumbing distributor, A1 McDonald's, is in a subsequent addition to the building. Commercial packaging originally met with city staff in the spring of 2017. Talks centered around municipal finance assistance to help with the removal of a derelict water tower and relief from the Mercer Avenue tap-on fee. They have requested to make a secondary exit or entrance onto Mercer Avenue. They have an existing commercial entrance on Ireland Grove. Considering the blighted condition of the property at the time, and the developers' plan to make significant improvements to the property and locate its headquarters offices there, staff recommends the city council support the developers' request. The removal of the water tower is estimated to be roughly $27,000. The Mercer Avenue tap-on fee is estimated to be $80,000 under its current cost. The proposed incentive agreement provides for a rebate of the city's portion of the property tax increment from the subject property to rebate the actual cost of the removal of the derelict water tower, limited to $40,000. They have a preliminary estimate. We've taken this dollar amount up to $40,000 in case there is some contingencies that need to be fulfilled under that removal. The... In order to receive the rebates, the demolition of the water tower must be complete and the headquarters offices located on the subject property by March 1st of 2019. Additionally, the agreement commits the city to providing a discount of 60% on the tap-on fee for the Mercer, South Mercer Avenue entrance. So right now, the tap-on fee is roughly $80,000. 60% of that would be 48,000. So they would have, under the current conditions, they would have roughly $32,000 in tap-on fees. So that number, we can't really lock in that number right now, because we don't know when that commercial entrance would actually go in. And so that tap-on fee can incrementally increase. So the tap-on fee is based on the original construction costs with the increase in the consumer price index and interest over time. So that incrementally is raising over time as we go, so that the interest would be to make that commercial entrance as soon as possible, so you don't have that incremental fee increasing. Adding the two components of the agreement together results in a package of assistance of approximately $75,000. The proposed agreement includes a clawback provision under which the developer would be required to repay the city a portion or all of the rebated property tax in the event the business ceases to operate at the subject property. Such a clawback provision is recommended under the city's economic incentive guidelines. This project also supports a number of strategic economic development goals for the city, including prosperous community, providing normal and customary incentives to new and existing businesses that are located within the city and create jobs, and a number of comprehensive plan goals related to economic development. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Austin Grammer, our economic development coordinator, is also here to answer some questions that the city council might have.
Questions of Mr. Mart or Mr. Grammer? Alderwoman Bray?
Well, thank you for that presentation, and thank you for your responses to the several questions I asked. I sent those over this afternoon, so you all will be ready to speak to those points. And you've already written out your answers, and I do appreciate that. So I have additional questions then. Talk to me about the valuation of this particular business. What kind of a concern is this? What is their net worth?
We didn't really evaluate the cost of the property or the valuation on that. Really, the project is centered on the incentive directed at removing the derelict water tower, and that's something that would remain on the property if we did not offer this incentive. In addition, there were some questions raised on whether or not that could be used as a sign. And in this case, our sign ordinance would consider the existing signage to be abandoned signage, and so you would not be able to put any additional signage on that water tower. So in essence, there's... It has no function for the current premises, and so that would become even further derelict on the property.
So I hear you saying it's staff's recommendation that the water tower should come down when you look at good city planning or good...
It's essentially aesthetics and for the long-term benefit. That may also open additional opportunities for expansion of the building or surface parking areas.
I see. So my earlier question about their value, net worth, has to do with whether or not we're dealing with a smaller concern here that's having trouble, perhaps, putting together the money to cover the cost for the property they purchased and expect inhabit and... Or whether, you know, I'd just kind of like to get a feel for what kind of entity we have...
Yeah, the incentive was not based on a direct need, other than that this is a cost that is something that, a request that was made through their development of the property.
So it's not needs-based, is what I hear you saying?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alderwoman Schmidt?
Thanks. So following up on Kim's questions, on a policy level, I guess I had the understanding that our economic development policy was based on a but-for analysis, that but for the city's assistance, a business couldn't, you know, grow or settle or whatever. And it sounds like... And I may be wrong about that policy, so please enlighten me if I am...
Right. I think the interest in this particular, the removal of the water tower, is that this is outside the norm of what they would have inherited under this existing facility. And so that this is out, this cost for removal of this particular facility on their property is an extenuating circumstance.
And the tap-on fees, I guess what I'm thinking about is in a longer trajectory here. If we have a business come to us next year and ask for certain things like tap-on fee discounts and that kind of thing, is this now part of our economic development portfolio that we would offer?
Right. It can be used as a tool. This is where we're at with this particular property. There are no enterprise zone incentives available to this particular property. There are no TIF districts in this particular property, and they're not in an area where they're generating sales tax. So those typical toolbox kind of efforts that we would work with them aren't really available. So they are locating at this particular property. We want to encourage their relocation to this facility and to see it expand. I guess I would say that the incentives that could be available to them were addressing this aesthetic issue with the derelict water tower. And then we had previously provided a relief from the full tap-on fees to the property to the north. So that incentive was considered for this particular property. They are not required to put in the secondary entrance. That's something that they wanted to do to expand the opportunities for both their business and the subsequent business on the property, the other distributorship. I think this would also provide some relief for the traffic that's generated along Ireland Grove to get that access, provide a secondary access out and in to the property. And so I think that's another incentive, an opportunity for the community.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
Just have a quick question about the water towers that's around. Is there, are there any safety issues with respect to the water, if this were to remain?
If we're looking at something that's been there for over 55 years or so, it's going to continue to deteriorate. And so as far as an enforcement kind of thing, I can't tell them to take that down, whether it's a, whether you consider it an ice ore or not. It has no useful purpose for them, but it will, it could offer opportunities for expansion of their existing facility.
Alderwoman Painter and then Burgess?
Thank you. And thanks for your explanation. I don't understand why this didn't all get ironed out before they bought the property. Why, after they've been there over a year, are they now, you know, asking for these things?
Sure. But these two incentives have not been part of their current project. So they have not... They're in the warehouse facility right now. They're in the office area is still under construction. The removal of the derelict water tower is something that they wanted to consider. They're not obligated to remove the water tower. They are not obligated to put in the secondary entrance that would take some additional traffic off of Ireland Grove. So they have not done these projects yet. I don't know that if this incentive was not provided to them, that they would still continue with that project.
Okay. And I guess my other concern is, I remember when the Morrissey Drive Storage Facility bought property from Wildwood, they were very upset that they didn't get TIFs or incentives. And they did a great job with that property. And what do we say to them and other people who've come to us wanting things like this, and they've been denied?
Okay. Well, each city council takes something on a case-by-case basis, and you determine the legitimacy of each request, incentive request. I'm not particularly familiar with the Morrissey request or the prior council actions, so I can't answer that today, but we can certainly provide some additional information on that one.
Okay. And can you give me some idea of... Okay, and can you give me some idea of the extra tax dollars that we're going to get from granting these incentives? From what I see, you know, we'll be denied any extra tax money for about twenty-one years. Is that correct?
Well, it, it, it's to the point where we achieve the, if, if the estimate is true, the $27,000, and we're assuming roughly $2,000 of increment generated beyond its current assessed valuation, that could be paid off much shorter than the, than the full twenty years.
Okay, thank you.
Alderwoman Burgess.
Thank you. A lot of times, the economic development packages we take a look at are dealing with new companies coming to our community, which we always like to see, but this is a nice reminder that these types of incentives also may be available to existing companies that want to expand or relocate within our community, which is something we also like to see. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit, because I think this is different than some of the other ones that we've seen, where we're talking about a needs-based incentive that's being given. Can you talk about how this particular one, which is dealing more with the condition of the property and hopefully changing the aesthetic of it, how that ties into some of our goals for infill development or, or remediating blighted properties in our community as is laid out in our comprehensive plan?
Sure. We'd like to see the redevelopment of the, of this particular property, and you see within your agenda packet the blighted conditions at, at the time of their purchase. So, what we're seeing now is a complete renovation of, of the structure to accommodate this new business and to move some of those existing businesses that were within the facility to new locations. So, what we're seeing is although you're displacing one or two businesses out of that existing facility, those have gone out and purchased additional facilities and, and brought new life to those areas. So, I think that's important as far as you're not displacing somebody and they're moving out of town, they're actually accepting some of these locations that meet their needs as well.
And have you made the evaluation at the staff level that this is the lowest necessary incentive in order to obtain, achieve those goals that we have as a city, as laid out in our comprehensive plan?
I think I would probably turn that over to Austin, if you want to respond to that.
I would say the answer to that is yes. Thank you.
A motion?
That we approve the economic incentive agreement to support the retention and expansion of commercial packaging in the city of Bloomington as requested.
Okay. Is there a second to this motion? Second. Second by Alderman Mathie, and again, this is primarily with respect, or almost exclusively with respect to the removal of the, the water tower. Is that correct?
And tap-on fees.
Tap-on fees, excuse me. Okay. But in terms of what we will get out of it. Okay. All right. If everyone will go ahead and vote. Okay. The motion carries seven to two. There are two nays to announce, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Painter? Alderman Schmidt?
Okay. Thank you very much. The motion carries. We will move on to City Manager's comments, and I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Rasmussen.
Thank you very much. As has become our custom now, every two weeks, we, every other council member would like to give a report from the Finance Director, and so I'm going to ask Mr. Rasmussen to come forward and give that to us now.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. For the next couple of months, we're going to be primarily focusing on the revenues. Until we get a couple more months in, the projection will remain just according to budget, so. Here we go. Currently, all the revenue categories, I shouldn't say all the revenue categories, most revenue categories are tracking favorably. I want to take a couple minutes and just kind of go through each line, one by one, to give you a, a feel for the layout of this report and any variances that we're experiencing right now. Property tax, right now, we're showing a 1.9 million variance from prior year, positive variance, that's simply a timing issue. I mean, the levy is a levy, so we're not going to be experiencing 1.9 million more in, in property tax revenues, so that's just merely a timing difference. The home rule sales tax, you can see we're $247,000 over budget year-to-date. That's a very positive indicator for the conditions here in Bloomington. It's $164,000 over the prior year. I want to take a moment and show you what we do internally in the Finance Department. I spoke to this last month. I thought maybe a visual on it would be more helpful. You can see here that when we do the budget, we actually use seasonality as we go through the year. We budget each month individually based on prior year's history and any trends we may see from the prior, prior year. Monthly, you can see 1.8 million, 2.1 almost, and 2 million. This column right here indicates the fees that we're experiencing from the state of Illinois. You can see that $90,000 in fees so far. The 2% went down to 1.5%, so that, that's a positive, but still, that's going to be affecting us tremendously for the year in the tune of, to the tune of $300,000 or so. State sales tax. Unfortunately, state sales tax is, is under for the month, and that has actually, that trend has continued through September. State sales tax, we're trying to get a handle on that with the Illinois Department of Revenue, along with the income tax, but right now, we're just not really sure why that's not tracking along with the home rule. Income tax has rebounded actually through September. We're actually $26,000 ahead of budget for income tax. The Illinois Department of Revenue has actually told us on that one that they think it's related to positive activity in the economy. Initially, they, they were thinking that it has had something to do with the changes in the tax laws, but right now, there's really nothing to really indicate that that's the case. It's really more or less just positive economic activity that's driving the extra income tax. Utility tax, it's been hot. So, we've got that $60,000 variance to budget, $48,000 over prior year. You know, when, when the temperatures are high, the air conditioners are running. Food and beverage, $64,000 positive year-to-date. That's another great indicator that conditions in Bloomington are going well. $48,000 variance to the prior year, so we all have to be happy about that. Skipping down to franchise tax, I mentioned this last month. I, I really think that we probably just over-budgeted on that one. We had Metro Net come into town, so we're kind of watching that one. It's still, it was approximately $80,000 down last month, so it's, it's kind of holding there, but we'll be keeping an eye on that. Replacement tax trending positively. Is, everyone's familiar with replacement tax? I'm seeing nodding. This was a tax that went into effect, I think, back in the seventies when they did away with personal property tax. So, this is an income tax that's been placed on pass-through entities and things of that nature to make up for that tax on a local basis. And then hotel motel, it, it's holding, but it is down significantly over prior year, so we're going to be keeping an eye on that as well. Any questions about revenue? All in all, I'd say revenue is, is trending favorably. We haven't experienced, you know, the State Farm effect to this point. I don't want to be banging that drum too loudly at this point, but I'll take this news.
Comments? Thank you so much, Scott.
Okay, I actually have a couple more things.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
That's okay, I can take off, but. We'll just run through this quickly, because in a, in a couple months, we'll start updating this projection, this column over here, updating that with indications we see in salaries and benefits primarily, if we started realizing vacancy savings. For the time being, I'll just highlight a couple of line items. You know, what we do in finance, we're looking for variances over prior year, variances compared to budget. At this point, you know, there's a lot of seasonality in the budget that it takes a few months for that to kind of flash out, so, you know, we've got a big increase in principal expense, 947 versus $384,000 in the prior year. That is really just a timing issue with our payment for the Government Center. So, we paid that really just at the end of the month instead of in the following month, so it occurred one month earlier. The other inter-government expense, 6.8 million versus 5.3 million in the prior year, that's related to fire and police pensions that are based on the property tax levy. So, since we got some of those monies early from the property tax, we paid into those pensions earlier. So, those are the variances there. One more slide, sir. Enterprise funds, tracking favorably, you know, other than the arena, which, you know, we have a budgeted loss. I added a line for this month to show the revenue trend. These trends, you know, with the, the major tax revenues, since we had delays with those, those are quite not as good of an indicator as they are with the enterprise funds, so I wanted to put it, put that on here for the enterprise funds. You can see water, sewer and storm, and solid waste all had fee increases, and those are tracking pretty close to our, our target of 33%. So, those fee increases are starting to be realized. There was some concern by myself and others that potentially with the structure we put into place with solid waste, there might be a migration from those larger containers down to the smaller ones, but that's not occurring at this point. And then with golf, you can see obviously a highly seasonal fund, 53% revenue trend, but you can see last year, they were at 52% as well. So, really just right on track with last year. So, overall, revenues tracking favorably, and two months, we'll start updating the projections and try to get an idea on the year. Any questions?
Questions, Scott?
Great.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rasmussen?
Thank you, and we just have one more slide that I wanted to show, and that is the upcoming events here, which Scott is going to put up and highlighted by the 50th anniversary of, of Parks and Recreation down at the bottom there. And that is all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And the only things that I have, first of all, I want to thank my colleagues, not just Steve Rasmussen, who joined us at the Illinois Municipal League, but also Alderwoman Bray and Alderman Meloambwe and Mathie for coming to the Illinois Municipal League. We certainly had lots of interesting interactions with people, as well as panels. One I was on was with the Large City Panel, and the, that includes 75,000 and above cities, included Juliette, and the mayor of Juliette couldn't come, so he sent his city manager, who happened to be our former city manager. I sat next to the mayor of Decatur, who I've known for a while, and she has confirmed I am allowed back into the city of Decatur. Also, we had, there was a great panel on sister cities, and not just the educational cultural component, but the economic components and the economic benefits of, of sister cities. But anyway, that was really great, and I would like to thank Alderwoman Schmidt for handling the speech at the Historic Marker Placement in Miller Park at the Friendship Bridge. Thank you so much. I appreciate your handling that. I'm sorry?
It was very moving.
I bet. Yeah, thank you. That's all I have. So, Alderman, any comments? Alderwoman Bray?
I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the opportunity to go to the Illinois Municipal League, meet with colleagues from other cities and towns, and, and when you go to this, you have these discussions, you have these learning opportunities, and you get a greater perspective about how amazing our community is and how many solutions we work out. Sometimes, you know, it's, it's sweat equity, but we get to the right place, and I have to tell you, a lot of the cities and towns are looking to us, and they, they want to steal our good ideas, which is fine, right? So, one of the interesting sessions that I attended related to some economic development opportunities and very interesting discussions about the reset of retail and experiential retail, and I, I just think it's fascinating. So, some of us have had some further discussions and, and just, you know, it invites creativity. So, thank you to the citizens for sending us, and we expect to do some real good things. Thanks.
As long as they let us steal theirs, too. Yeah. Okay. Alderman Meloambwe?
Yes, and I want to share, too, that I, I enjoy going there, although it was only for a day, so it's, it's a little difficult to get as much as my, my colleagues did, but I, I still enjoyed my, my time there. One of the interesting sessions that I, I went to was the opening plenary session with Bo Jackson. And so, it was really interesting to hear some of the things that he's involved with and, and in different communities, and I, and I think a couple of us have been talking about at least looking into it to, 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 to understand what the details are of those. And I don't want to give up too much yet, you know, until we have a, an opportunity to, to, to look at that, because he didn't go into a whole lot of detail. Another session that I attended was on, on TIFs, which I, you know, I wasn't quite sure what to expect, but I thought, well, let me just go and, and try to, you know, learn as much as I can and realize that, oh my gosh, we've done so much of it, that we, we are actually, there wasn't a whole lot to learn, you know, in the session, because, I mean, Bloomington has done quite a few of, of those things. And I, I think we were all together in, in the last session with some candidates for statewide office. That was, I think it was the first time that the IML had organized something like that to try to hear from all the other, from the candidates, but unfortunately, some could not make it. I was looking forward to seeing a, maybe I guess, you know, contrasting views of, you know, each of those candidates and then, you know, and how, you know, what their views, I mean, how their views might affect, you know, the city, but we didn't have an opportunity to do that, so we just heard from one side or another, so. But it was very good. I encourage, you know, each and every one of you to, to go whenever you can, but I know it's really difficult with schedules, but it was enjoyable.
Thank you very much. All right? At this point, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second? Second by Alderwoman Bray. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.